Mr. LaFlem.
Here.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from the September 9th, 2019 meeting that were included in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oster and seconded by Mr. LaFlem. Any discussion, corrections on the minutes? It's a September 9th.
What was that?
Page eight, line 314. I also noted that there had been a crosswalk at Craig School.
Okay, what was I didn't hear you still.
On 314, I had also noted that there had been a crosswalk at Craig School.
So Ms. Gold stated that there is definitely a need for one by Craig School and that there used to be a crosswalk? There was a pre-existing crosswalk, something along those lines?
Or we could say Ms. Gold stated that there had had been a crosswalk there before and it is definitely, there was definitely a need for one by Craig School.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And Ily has had a minor nit typo, nothing's nothing big here. On line 81, it'd be page three, just it's chairman versus chairman, that's all. Okay. I think those are pretty minor changes, so all those in favor approving the minutes as slightly modified, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing nobody opposed, we'll approve the minutes as modified. Okay, while we're on minutes, Laura, I know, did you get a chance to look to see if we approved the?
Yeah, I was, I read through the September 23rd minutes and it did have a vote for approval.
Okay, good, so we're all up to date.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, not up to date, we still got the?
So we'll have September 23rd and then tonight's meeting at the November meeting.
Okay, September 24th. Thank you for doing that, I was confused on where we're at. All right, we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the town of Niskiuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and we'll listen to what you have to say. So privilege of the floor is open. Anybody, residents? No? Okay, seeing no one for privilege of the floor, we'll move on the agenda. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go right to new to new business. First up, we have Resolution 2019-28, a resolution for final subdivision approval of a 66 single-family residential subdivision known as Harmon Grove. And I know this is a long one, so we appreciate you in advance, Linda, on this one.
And for the record, we did make some minor changes to the paper packet that you have. So Linda's going to read the one that was modified, updated on the website and then printed out for you guys.
Thank you.
One of the purposes of the meeting was taking action on a final plat for a major subdivision. Whereas George Amador of Amador Homes has submitted a minor major subdivision application to the planning board for a 66 lot, single-family residential subdivision on the lands of WEW Advisory Corp., Balltown Road, as shown on the subdivision map entitled "Overall Plan 66 Lots Residential Subdivision Wagner Way, Town of Niskiuna, County of Schenectady by ABD Engineers and Surveyors dated August 13, August 2013, and last modified September 25, 2019. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is a high-density residential zoning district, and whereas the planning board by Resolution 2017-18 granted preliminary subdivision approval for the project on June 26, 2017, and extended said approval on December 11, 2017 through Resolution 2017-32. And whereas the planning board by its Resolution 2017-8 determined that the project will not have significant effect on the environment and directed the town planner to file a negative declaration. And whereas the planning board recommended that a neighborhood park be created at the intersection of Bergen Place and Alita Drive labeled Parkland to be dedicated to the town of Niskiuna, 10,484 plus or minus square foot will include a small play area, parking lot, and playground equipment, and that the remaining balance of Parkland required would not be appropriately constructed for this subdivision, so a fee in lieu of Parkland would be given to the town. And now therefore be it hereby resolved that the planning board does grant final subdivision approval to the project known as Harmon Grove Amador Subdivision with the following conditions. The resolution shall be incorporated into any deed of sale for the subdivision and the conditions of this resolution shall be binding on the applicant, the owner if different than the applicant and their successors, signees, or transferees. Wetland boundaries requiring buffer and the limited limits of wetland impact shall be recorded in the deeds and plot plans of each building lot. A note shall be added to each plot plan to state that only these areas identified on the subdivision maps as areas of wetland impact may be disturbed and that the remaining wetlands may not be drained or physically altered without appropriate permits from the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within 25 feet foot buffer from the boundary of the wetlands unless prior written approvals are granted by the town planning department. A split rail fence must be installed in said 25-foot buffer in each affected lot prior to issuance of a final certificate of occupancy. Should the garage floor elevation for individual lots deviate by more than six feet, six inches from the elevations approved for construction by the planning board and zoning commission of the building department, then revised grading plan shall be submitted immediately to the town's engineers' office for their review and approval. Depending on the impact to driveway slopes or drainage features such as swales and berms, the revised grading plan may need to extend into subdivision-wide grading plan to ensure impacts to adjacent lots are accounted for. The applicant shall update the tree planting plan as required by Section 189-2416 of the Town of Niskiuna subdivision regulations to reflect an increase in the number of species planted and removal of invasive species listed, Norway maple. To the greatest extent practical, the applicant shall retain mature-growth trees along the rear of the properties on Schwaber Drive and south of the E1 parking area, including undergrowth. After the street right-of-ways are cleared and there are better access to the site, the developer contacted the tree council, invited them to cite to better identify any additional species, specific trees to be retained. The developer and the tree council have agreed to two additional smaller caliper trees to be planted in the parks and detention basins of the subdivision to offset the clearing for each home. Prior to road and utility acceptance, the applicant shall provide all deeds and easements to the town attorney for their review and approval. All conveyances shall be approved by the town attorney and filed with the Schenectady County Recorder's Office at the applicant's expense. The applicant shall assign or convey to the town in a form of acceptable to the town's attorney a right of crossing under the utility lines in pursuit of the multi-use trail connection from the property to the town's election center. The applicant shall supply to the town an easement from the lands of Environment One Corp. to allow the town to use Environment One driveway from Balltown Road to the emergency access of Harmon Grove subdivision and remove snow from said driveway if necessary for access. The applicant shall pay a Parkland fee to the town of 4,000, 49,500. The town will hold said Parkland fee in escrow until a value is assigned to the real property, which will become a pocket park in the subdivision, at which time the town will return a portion of the escrow to the applicant equal to the value of the land. The town will deposit the remaining balance into the Parkland fees into the park, town's Parkland account. In accordance with Chapter 180 of the Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of Water Sewer and Engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Pursuant to the public comments on the proposed subdivision, the developer shall work with the town highway department to install child at-play signage and other traffic calming measures to keep traffic slow and traffic volumes low through Schwaber Drive subdivision connection. The applicant shall work with the planning department to correct minor typographical errors on the plat prior to the final recording.
Thank you, Ms. Chiketti. See, I don't think we had a project lead because that was, this project's been around a while.
It was Ursula.
Yeah, somebody that's left, but so I have a motion for approval of this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scraby Tennis and seconded by Mr. Darpino. And we'll have some discussion, we have the applicant and the applicant's engineer with us here tonight. If we have any questions for them at all. I think the conditions are pretty thorough, so I think we're in pretty good shape. I mean, I really didn't have any comments, this has been a work in progress for some time, so. I mean, what's what's left after this, Laura, just basically closing, open items and moving forward? Did the town already accept the roads and everything, or is that?
It's on the town board meeting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Laura, have you heard any feedback at all during the road clearing and building process from the neighbors, the folks in Riley Way and?
Um. Yes, a couple of them were concerned about the limits of clearing and felt like they had gone over on their property line. And so I sent the information to the developer and because the town doesn't, I mean, we can look at limits of clearing, but the developer said they weren't. And the private property owner said they were, so that ends up just being a civil issue. But after I put the two of them in contact together, I didn't hear again, so usually that means that something was resolved.
Okay, was one property owner or more than?
That I can remember, yeah, it was a property owner on Riley Way. And actually, most of the comments that I got were when they were building the wetland behind Riley Way, because maybe we didn't even realize this, but there was mitigation for this subdivision behind Morris Court. So they actually went in and cleared down trees and built a wetland behind Morris Court. And so there was a lot of concern from those residents because they were like, the subdivision's supposed to be on the other side of the road, other side of the power lines. But it was because they were building a mitigation wetland.
Okay, so at the end of the day, there's no interactions with the existing neighborhood there that requires anything in this resolution?
I not, I mean, I had actually forgotten about the children-at-play signs, like John's here, like, we can figure out when to install those, I think that probably now. I mean, we didn't really need to before, but now they have the building permits going and stuff like that.
Okay. And just one thing for the board, this is a small grammatical thing. Is everyone comfortable how number nine reads? Does it make clear that the applicant is going to be responsible for snow removal?
No, I think the town would do the snow removal.
So, okay, so that's why, so it was a little, the way it reads, the town is responsible for snow removal. So is that what you wanted there?
Yeah, because the town.
Just trying to make sure.
So, yeah, so.
That's how it reads?
Yeah, yes, we want the town to be able to go in there and do snow removal.
Is it just snow removal, not any types of repairs? Is that the scope of the easement?
Uh, nope, it would be emergency access.
So maybe I want to just clarify it so that the purpose isn't so limiting.
Um, but it says to them, oh, yeah, maybe.
And then you had asked me earlier this morning, I'm not sure if you've gotten clarification. And I believe the applicant had asked about the first condition.
Right.
Did you ever clarify that, or do you want me to go over?
I did not clarify it with them.
The question was whether or not, so condition one reads, this resolution shall be incorporated into any deed of sale for this subdivision. The question presented to Laura was whether or not for all 66 deeds, this resolution needs to be incorporated or in so much as the applicant plans on selling this entire subdivision in one sale to another buyer, is that correct, Laura?
Yeah, which at this point probably wouldn't.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, this resolution could still be voted on and go forward, but there are not, it's not necessary, you can't just attach a resolution to a deed. I think there's specific conditions in here. For example, you know, the wetlands' conditions would need to be incorporated into any deeds or else it would have to be explicitly referenced in any deed. But for example, something like condition five, that would be, you know, unnecessary to include in a deed, which just says they have to update the tree planting plan. So I don't want, know if you want me to like state for the record which ones should be in a deed or if that's a conversation we can have after.
This is pretty boil, this is, if I recall correctly, this is like a resol, a condition we have in like every major. So if we do it for one, are we then going to have to go back and undo every other one?
I think, no, I don't, I mean, so in so much as a deed, you know, it runs with the property for, in perpetuity. Having in the deed that says, you know, the applicant shall update the tree planting plan, if the filer of the, that only is applicable, I mean, the language would need to be repeated that says shall be binding on the applicant, the owner if different than the applicant, their successor, signs, or transferees. So like, condition five doesn't necessarily run with the land, as does something like the wetlands. Or the, I mean, the easement.
Or to section 12.
Yeah, or like something about the easement, like that's a separate condition that will have an easement filed, so it doesn't need to be in the deed.
Yeah, and condition number two actually says that wetland boundaries and the required buffers and the limits of wetland impact shall be recorded in the deeds and plot plans on each building lot. So I don't know if maybe that covers any, everything that would probably go forward with it anyway.
Right, but condition five is only applicable to the applicant.
Right.
Not to the, any, it only, it specifically refers to the applicant, so I guess it does. Maybe if it's there and listed, who cares, because it's only applicable to the applicant.
Yeah, I feel like the only one that's really applicable to the private property owner is the wetlands and the 25-foot buffer.
Yeah, so I mean, those ones, I think there's also the one that says, I mean, what about the mature-growth trees?
Oh, that one is important, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, to the extent that you want to reduce, I mean, if you were to incorporate all 12, 13 of these conditions into 66 deeds, I don't think it's necessary, like, I mean, to have one that says prior to road and utility acceptance, applicant shall provide all deeds and easements, because that's conditioned on filing, that happens before they file the deed. So just to make it very clear so that future owners or, you know, any signees, transferees know what they're bound by. I mean, I think we can, not remove, but purposes of the deed, only the conditions that run with the land need to be in there.
Okay.
And they should be in all 66, well, yeah, they should be in the all 66.
Should we modify then provision one to offer, provide the authority to negotiate these items? Or should it be specific?
I mean, if you want, just so that we, I would say, you know, this resolution shall be incorporated into any deed sale for the subdivision in so much as these, you know, covenants run with the land as determined at the town attorney, office of the town attorney?
Yeah.
So just a clarification question. Was our intent behind number one for it to be with all 66?
I think.
Deeds or only for the subdivision level?
We put this actually in every single.
Right, so I've written every single one, and I guess I can, so I guess I'm asking a question. Was the intent always for every property in a subdivision or for just the subdivision as a whole?
Um. It's never been a question, I've never been asked that question. I would, I would think probably just the subdivision.
But then how would you, how would you obligate something like the wetland boundaries? How would you enforce that?
Right, so, I mean, that's why condition number two specifically says the wetland boundaries.
Yeah.
So the only one that I think that is leaving out is the mature growth on the, between here and.
My view is that it was always, you know, all the homes that were sold, because it says any deed of sale. Not, you know, it's not just the subdivision itself. Now, if we can do, you know, if there's a problem, we can, we can modify the condition again. And as Mr. Oster said, this has been a standard condition. We can, we can look at bidding them differently on a go-forward basis, so ones that need to be in, you know, we could, we could do that also. But for tonight, do we need to do a modification on condition number one or any of the conditions? I guess that's the bottom line.
I think just we need to just add, so that one isn't so broadened that it's clear for the applicant, their obligations vis-à-vis preparation of deeds and, you know, informing the buyer of the subdivision, that we will prepare, the office of the town attorney will identify the exact conditions that need to be incorporated into all 66 deeds.
What's the language, Laura?
You want the language for one?
Yeah. So it would be the first sentence, but then.
I just put.
And taking so much as the deeds run with the land, the town attorney will notify the applicant.
I'll just put, so I just put for one, just instead of the, start with the conditions deemed to run with the land as determined by the office of the town attorney shall be incorporated into any deed of sale for this 66 lot subdivision, I think that's sufficient.
Once you get that, Laura, just get one more read back, okay?
Got it. Okay, so it'll say, the conditions deemed to run with the land as determined by the town attorney shall be incorporated into any deed of sale for the subdivision and the conditions of the resolution shall be binding on the applicant, the owner if different than the applicant and their successors, the signs, or transferees.
Yeah, just change the conditions to those conditions.
And those.
Okay.
And, yeah, and then remove of this resolution.
Yeah.
And what it'll say, and those conditions shall be binding on the applicant, the owner if different than the applicant, their successors.
And I can circulate to everyone which conditions identify.
I hope this is germane, but you do raise an interesting question, the previous, since we've used this language repeatedly, in previous subdivisions, what has been the practice? I guess it's a question to go back and examine, maybe for the next meeting, because.
I have, I have seen them come up in title searches occasionally, and I have seen them completely missed. So, yeah, it just, I think it just depends on who's doing.
Recording.
Yeah.
We're doing recordation.
Mm-hmm.
They also often, in like this instance, if it was one, they're filing one, the first original deed of the, for the 66 lot subdivision, all of the deeds thereafter will just reference back to the first one filed, which is fine, but you just want to make sure that people are actually going and pulling that original deed.
What, or is there sort of like boilerplate language being used in other towns? That, I mean, to me, this seems like a pretty.
Yeah.
Basic premise across any subdivision in any town in New York State. Is there any, is it, is there any other way that's being said?
I mean, I can't say, I can't speak to what other towns are doing, I can look into it, but I just think that the way we can move forward with more clarity is separate, you know, just organizationally separate the conditions that involve the applicant. So, for example, we wouldn't require 15 years from now someone to come in and update the tree plan. You just start with those, and then the second portion of the resolution says, you know, these are the conditions that should run with any, and then instead of being like one, two, three, it could just be one, like A, B, C.
Yeah.
It's cleaner title.
Yeah, that's just easier, cleaner.
Mm-hmm, that would be a lot cleaner, because the resolutions, when they are incorporated, do cause confusion. That's why I've seen them.
Yeah.
And just the error, the risk of error.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but this is fine, I mean, like I said, as long as the applicant under, is fine. I believe he would be, because he emailed us about it, so.
John, do you want to speak to that?
No, I appreciate your conversation, I understand, I modified this, it's fine. It's a great catch.
Yeah, I think going forward is probably a cleaner.
Yep.
Yeah, I like, yeah.
And I don't think there's any need to revisit how it was done.
Yeah, I mean.
Hey, we're all for making things better and improving efficiencies, so it sounds like it does both of those, so. In the long run, so with it on a go-forward basis, well, for tonight, we need, we have a motion, we need to make a motion. I'll make a motion to modify condition number one as previously stated. And then seconded by Mr. Khan. Any other discussion at all?
And should we also make a motion to modify condition number nine as recommended by?
Yes, so for emergency services.
To make that more broad, general, general maintenance and upkeep and emergency access? Or just omit the snow removal statement?
So you just, we could just strike, remove snow and just say general maintenance?
And is it required maintenance, or?
And any required maintenance from said driveway if necessary for access? I don't, that don't really sound right.
I mean, if you wanted to sound clean, you can just cut out a lot of this. You can just put the applicant shall supply to the town an emergency access easement from the lands of Environmental One Corporation to, for use of the Environmental One driveway from Balltown Road.
So after Balltown Road, just put a period, is that what I heard?
Um, to use the environmental driveway for emergency access of the Harmon Grove subdivision. Do you think that last part is necessary, Laura, or do you think that's?
No, so it would say the applicant shall supply to the town an emergency access easement. Yeah. Across the lands of Environment One Corporation.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Excuse me, what number is that?
Number nine.
Nine?
John, can you just state your name?
John Boscelini, Amador Homes. I have a different, this must have been an earlier copy, this mentions the trees.
Oh, that's right, there might have been renumbered, Laura, you haven't.
The, the emergency access road is a, is a short road between E1's driveway and the subdivision that the town will own and maintain.
We own the easement across it, E1 will still be the underlying landowner of their own driveway.
Correct, their driveway and the access road is, is two separate parcels.
Yeah.
So there is no homeowner association here, there's, after the last house, the 66th house sells, there is no one to maintain that access road, that short.
Right, that's why the town, if the town, so I mean, E1 is probably going to maintain its own driveway. It's obviously, their level of driveway deterioration is probably going to be much higher than the town's level of driveway deterioration needs for an emergency access. But the town would need to be able to fix it if they needed to be able to. So I mean, like, it would just be an emergency situation, like if a tree fell, you know, across there or for some reason E1 shut down and somebody needed, whatever. It's very unlikely, but they would have to be able to put a plow down, plow up E1's driveway in order to be able to access the emergency access to, um, over to Harmon Grove. But, yeah, there's no, I completely understand, this is a single-family subdivision, so the developer wouldn't be able to come, we couldn't call up the developer and be like, oh, we need to get to the emergency access now, like, can you plow for us? That's not what this is for, this is so that we can get to where we're going. It's unlikely, because E1 is probably going to maintain it way better than we are, but.
So isn't, so for the number nine, I know you don't have it in front of you, but out of mine, just, can we just?
Let's put a number in the old resolution.
Yeah.
We were looking for, I don't see it on there.
You can get rid of that one, yeah. It should have been in the one I emailed you, it didn't change.
Laura, it's sitting right on my desk where I walked out today, I'm sorry.
Can we just put a period where it says emergency access of the Harmon Grove subdivision period and just remove and snow removal from said driveway for access? Because that's, you know, whether or not we remove snow or do maintenance or whatever, if we have easement, we're all set, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, that's sufficient, all easements have to have a stated purpose, I think it's simplifies it.
So, yeah, we just strike the words and remove snow from said driveway if necessary for access. That goes without saying. Is that reasonable, Laura?
Yeah, yeah, so instead of two, it would say four, emergency access to the Harmon Grove subdivision period.
Yeah, four, yeah, four.
So.
Got it.
Last, last round, the applicant shall supply to the town an emergency access across the lands, easement across the lands of Environment One Corporation to allow the town to use Environment One driveway from Balltown Road for emergency access to the Harmon Grove subdivision.
Got it. I like it, so, all right, so we'll need to make a motion that we modify condition number nine as just stated, basically some minor changes and seconded by Mr. Khan also. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Any other discussion on the resolution at all as amended, those two amendments that we just made? Okay, I guess we'll, we'll take the vote and we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Conditions number one and conditions number nine were amended, okay, the latest revision.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Scraby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. LaFlem?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye, resolution's approved. So I think we're, yeah, we are all set, and we'll say, I think we're all, we are all set. Glad I'll leave him hanging, I think we're all set. But do you have any questions or anything for us, or? Okay.
Just speaking to the tree issue and some of the changes there. We're going to be around for another 65 building permits and 66 certificates of occupancy. We're going to be working right along with you to resolve tree numbers, locations, calipers, and working with your tree committee.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, no, thank you.
Keep the neighbors already there happy.
Will do.
All right. Okay, thank you, we'll move on, resolution, Resolution 2019-29, a resolution for site plan approval of Body Works Professionals at 1343 Balltown Road. Ms. Chiketti?
One of the purposes of the meeting is to take action on the application for a site plan review. Whereas Body Works Professionals has made an application to the planning board for a retail service massage parlor at 1343 Balltown Road as shown in a site plan entitled Site Plan 1343 Balltown Road, Niskiuna, New York, 12309 by mysiteplan.com, received by the planning department on September 27th, 2019. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is CN, Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. And whereas the planning board referred this application to the town superintendent of Water Sewer and Engineering and the fire district chief and the chief of police, and there was no objection to the proposal. And whereas the board has carefully reviewed the proposal and by this resolution to set forth its decision hereon, now therefore be it hereby resolved that the planning board and zoning commission find that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves this site plan intended space.
Thank you, have a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scraby Tennis and seconded by Mr. McPartland, thank you. And we'll move right into discussion. Okay, we know we have the applicant, applicant and therapist, masseuse, help me out here.
Massage therapist, that's right.
Massage therapist, okay, I was right.
Listen, I'm, my name is Nick Bivoldy, Body Work Professionals.
I'm Amy Alcay.
Okay. And we had the resolution tonight. There's a couple of things. One thing that we're passing down is, I had a question earlier, because when I was looking at, I guess it was a tree planting thing. I missed in that map, the handicaps. I was concerned about a handicap space and talked to Laura today, but, you know, there is a handicap space, and this shows it. So actually, the agenda statement says eight spots. There's actually nine counting the handicap spot. So there's some pictures of that. So that's good. It gives, you know, meets the regulations with the handicap spot, and it also meets the requirements for the zoning in the area for neighborhood commercial. The other thing was, in past similar applications, we requested license information to have it on file. The applicant did provide the licenses for the therapists, and also the New York State's license or permit, I'm not sure you call it.
Registration.
Registration. Those were submitted, so I'd like the record to reflect that they have been submitted in keeping with other applicants, which is great. So we don't need to modify the resolution. We have the information, okay? And the only question that I had, and I actually discussed it before the meeting with the applicant, was just, you know, you know, eight spa, you know, you have the handicap. Obviously, it's for somebody handicapped. If you have scheduling where you're full, you got eight spots, and there's eight, four therapists and four customers, clients, whatever you want to call it there. You know, if somebody shows up early, there's not enough spots to park. So that was one of the questions I had, how you handle overflow parking. And the answer was, it sounds like one of the therapists will be walking to work as a Niskuna resident right nearby the establishment. But is there, is there any other fail-safe out there, contingency plan for parking, if you do have an event where you get extra people? Or, you know, people show up, is it on street parking along, is it out?
There is street parking.
I, I'd have to guess they park at CVS, and just simply cross over Balltown.
Yeah.
I, I just, just, just knowing that, like, the CVS parking lots never fall, I, I just, again, I'm not, I don't think that that's what you've planned, but I, I would anticipate that would be the, what would happen.
And I would.
Another lot next door that's vacant right now with the Montessori as well, a larger lot there.
Yeah. But the applicant mentioned that, you know, there, it's a scheduling, you know, the way they schedule, it shouldn't be an issue, because if they schedule, you know, 15-minute gap between the next meeting, there's, you know, there shouldn't be a problem. So they recognize the limitations of the site. It does meet the code, so, all right? So just trying to think ahead, make sure you're successful too, right? Wouldn't cause any issues either for the neighborhood or yourselves. All right, so that's really it. Do you have anything else to add?
I do have, the AJ Sign Company did get back to me with a sign.
Oh, okay.
We'll just share.
We can pass them down, and we can share it. Now, the, we haven't had an opportunity to, the planning office to take a look at this, though, right, Laura? So this is the first you've seen it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where, where will the monument sign be located?
Yeah. You know, I'm sort of leaning on AJ to go over the, they've got somebody that, I guess, kind of handles that kind of thing. So we've got a couple of grassy areas, and I figured, figured there. But I'm gonna, I'm kind of hoping AJ Sign will inform me on that, because I'm not really familiar with where you put them.
Are they, they're not here tonight, are they?
They're not, no.
Okay, so I guess the way we would handle this, Laura, is that this would come to your office for a building permit, and then if it wasn't appropriate, the size or whatever, or the materials, then you would deny it? Is that?
Yeah.
Is this the first we've seen it, so we, you know?
Yep.
It's 18.75, so my guess is that it needs to be 16, although he can probably just make it 16. I mean, you're only losing a couple inches on either side.
Yeah.
And then it's just approvable.
Because there's no sign there. There's no monument.
Currently, there's not.
Yeah, there's no monument. And is the space now, I mean, is this sign on the building going to be the sort of the same area where the current one is now? Is it the same size?
From, what I could see from the regulation, it's, you can get a total of 20 square feet for sign. So this one, the one in the building will be significantly smaller, and when we occupy the building, and we'll have more monument sign. Whereas the one on the building currently, I think, is a 20-square-foot sign altogether. So we'll have a much smaller footprint on the building and a larger footprint on the monument sign.
When do you expect to be able to be in business over there?
We're hoping to close right before the end of the year, and then figure February or March to really get open, and then probably May to have like a grand opening or something like that.
All right. So I could close, are you going to acquire the site, or are you going to lease the site?
We're going to acquire the site.
Yeah, it definitely, I think, I think it probably has to go to the zoning board. My guess is we don't have the ability to waive that in the CN, but you would have to have a site of five acres in order to have a freestanding monument sign.
So if it's 16 feet, we can do it with approval? Is it 16?
No. Yeah, I was double-checking the Neighborhood Commercial sign code, and it's actually for all uses, per site. So five acres or more, one freestanding monument sign is allowed per driveway. But I don't think, you guys are definitely not over five acres.
No.
So you probably just, you probably would want to bring the sign down to 16 square feet, and then the sign would require going to it, the zoning board of appeals.
For a monument sign.
Yeah.
For, for a monument, yeah.
If they want the monument.
That makes sense, you're right. So you're not allowed a monument sign right now.
That's why they're probably.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
So what, what triggers that is, you know, if you, you can, you know, you can always talk to the planning department to try to, you know, make the sign application the best, most conforming you possibly can. If it's still your wish, and it's not conforming, then you apply for a building permit, and the building department will deny the permit because it doesn't meet the code. And then you'd go to the zoning board of appeals, your case for an area variance to get the sign approved. So, good news is that since you got, it sounds like you have time, and we just saw this tonight. So I'd suggest, Laura, it'd be appropriate just to contact the planning office and work with them on what the requirements are, and see if you can, you know, get closer to meeting the requirements, right?
Yeah, because the facade sign is fine. You could put the facade sign up after planning board approval when you're moving in, but the monument sign, we can't say yes to.
Okay.
Wouldn't we want to see where the monument sign is going to go before we?
The facade, well, no, the signage, if it's only the facade sign, right, the wall sign, that's all, just a building permit. We don't have to have it.
No, I understand that part, but.
Yeah. And it's what?
Yeah, that's actually why I was checking the code, because there are some, there are some zones that require the planning board to approve any sign in the zone. I don't see that in here.
Can't we also, does the, does our board have the authority to waive the sign?
I would have to check, because sometimes we can waive and sometimes we can't. It actually depends on if it's written into the code.
Is, is it, is it worthwhile, since this guy introduced tonight, is it worthwhile to just do it a little more carefully?
Yeah. No, that's what I was suggesting, is they come into the planning office and, you know, this is where you're at, and find out how to make it conforming, and she has, Laura, have time, or the assistant town planner to review the code, and then we can figure it out then. And it sounds like with your timetable, you have time to do it.
Yeah.
Instead of making, you have a resolution tonight that'll allow you to go forward with your, you know, with the business, at least, in whatever real estate.
The sign, we can be flexible.
You got it.
Yeah.
The sign is not part of the plan.
It's not in.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not part of the plan, and it's not in the resolution tonight.
Not.
No, I just happened to get it a couple of days ago.
No, and we appreciate it.
But we do want to at least take a look at it. Because I can't even think who else has a monument sign on that block.
You know, I think there may be, it's not a monument sign. Isn't the, the next-door neighbor has a little hanging sign, doesn't it?
Oh, the Bruce Trachtenberg Law Firm.
Yeah. It's tiny, though. It's like this big. It's like the home occupation sign. Right? Yeah. So I guess I can coordinate with them. This is not part of what we're approving.
Correct.
And we would either do a recommendation to the zoning board for it, or a waiver with a different application.
Yep. Okay. All right. So we have a resolution that's been moved and seconded.
But because it is removed, it would require $200 either to come back before the planning board, or to come back before the zoning board for the sign, as part of the sign package.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So we're all set with the resolution itself, right? Any other comments on the resolutions, or? No? Okay, let's call the roll on that then.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. LaFlem?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Resolution's approved, and you're all set to go forward with the business. Obviously, with any permits that are required, so welcome to Niskuna, and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
And come on in with the planning office and work through the sign, and we'll, we'll see if there's any action for us on that or not, okay?
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Got one more resolution tonight. Resolution 2019-30, a resolution for site plan approval of Empire Asset Management at 2341 Nut Street.
One of the purposes of the meeting is to take action on the application for site plan review, whereas John McCaffrey, representing Empire State Management, has made an application to the planning board for a new tenant site plan review for the property located at 2341 of the ShopRite Plaza, number 204, as shown on page two, site plan entitled St. James' Square, Phase Two, Niskuna, New York, dated September 29, 2009 by Rivedi Design Group. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District within the Town Center Overlay District, and whereas the applicant is proposing a financial management services company, and whereas the planning board referred the application to the Town Superintendent of Water, Sewer and Engineering, the Fire District Chief, and the Chief of Police, and there was no objection to the proposal. And whereas the board has carefully reviewed the proposal, and by this resolution does set forth its decision hereon, and now therefore be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission find the Empire's Asset Management Site Plan meets the requirements of the zoning code, previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change.
Okay, thank you. Have motion to approve the resolution?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scrubby Tennis, and seconded by Mr. Oster. Thank you. All right. The applicant's here, Mr. McCaffrey, that was, McCaffrey? And, and so tonight, the resolution has nothing on signage, though, so we need to have that discussion, because we did receive this tonight. I know that there was an original, yeah, it was included to the planning office, and there was concern from the planning office, and my viewpoint also, that the Statue of Liberty, you know, excuse, Empire State Building, sorry, you know what I meant. It's close. Empire State Building, you know, went up into the facade, into the peak up there. And so we have a new submittal tonight that shows it 32 inches tall, not protruding up into that area of the facade. And so we just received this. Laura, did you get a chance to run the numbers on that? Is it?
Yes, it is 32 square feet. So, sorry. So it's obviously less than was originally proposed, but I don't have, and I was looking in front of me, what the linear feet of the building is. Do either of you guys know that? Of that suite. So like, if the linear feet of that suite was like 20 square feet, they would be allowed a 20-square-foot sign.
See if it's on the map here.
That's what, did he look it up?
Nope. So I, so I think there's improvement. I don't know if you want to come to the podium or not and state your name, and for the record, we have it for any discussion. So, you know, we got the resolution moved and seconded. We're pretty good with the resolution, because it was a pre-existing use, is similar to a new use, so that's great news, right, and everything. So we just want to work through the sign. If we can work through it tonight, we can. You know, it'd be nice, right? But we don't have all the data. That's what Laura was looking at, to see whether the sign meets the code or not.
Okay. My name, John McCaffrey, and this is Joe Paulsonelli. He's the actual tenant going into space.
Okay.
Are you asking me the square, the square footage of the space he's taking, or the linear square feet of the front of the space?
The linear feet of the front of the space.
If you have a ruler, there is a scale on the drawing, but you need a ruler, or to measure out on your iPhone. Guess we want to do that here.
Yeah, you're allowed so much signage per linear length of the facade that you have available for it. And, and we obviously didn't have an, didn't get an opportunity to work that all out before the meeting, so. So how to carry out the, for the business itself, is this your existing logo that you have?
It is, yes, it is.
And here's another site now. You have a sign similar to this up now?
I'm in an interior office, building in downtown Schenectady, so there is no opportunity to put it next to it.
Your letterhead has this type of, 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 of letterhead? Is this your?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's probably intrinsic, but you can't double-check it, is the problem.
So very similar to the last applicant, right? We just, you know, sign information. If we need to work through the sign, we can still approve the change of tenant, the site plan to allow you to get in there. We can always follow up, you know, working out the sign to make sure it's compliant with the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So if the door is three foot wide, I'm going to assume that the pier is probably two foot wide at the bricks. The scale is.
Thirty-six, at least thirty-six?
That's three feet.
Three feet, oh, three feet.
So it's, I think the scale of the sign at 12 feet off of this is a little big. So your facade is somewheres between 18 to 20 feet overall, probably pier to pier outside, plus or minus.
I mean, I, I, yeah, I can look at the taita vishu, but that sounds right to me.
Well, this is, because it's replacing the Edward Jones.
So according to this, it's about, it's about an inch, one and a half inches on the, so that's what, that's what I do to math. One and a half inches by one inch is a foot.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know if this was printed out as the scale that that one, if this was a two-foot by three-foot plan.
Well, the facade that you have has two piers with a gable above it, at your storefront. But this drawing has a pier drawn in between the two.
Well, I think that's this pier.
Yeah, it's this pier here, between the two.
There's more room.
So is the facade from pier to pier, or is it from storefront to storefront?
Yeah, it's from storefront to storefront. So, yes.
That would give you, right.
Yep.
So this is definitely requiring a waiver. It's probably like, it's probably between a 12 and, what, like maybe 17-foot waiver on the signage, depending on if it was a 15 to, so we say 15 to 20 square feet of storefrontage.
Right. Well, my opinion is that we're trying to engineer it now at the meeting. It's probably not the right thing to be doing. We have a resolution that'll allow you to go forward, and I think you should need to work with the planning office, make application for the signage, right? And then you can, if.
Unless, I mean, I don't know what your timeframe is, unless you would like to wait on everything, and then get approval in November. Like, this approval would allow you to move in, and?
Yeah, the sign is separate.
Is separate.
We could definitely work with.
If he wants to be in before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we get you in, we get the resolution approved, you get in there, and then you can follow up on the sign with the planning office.
You know, whatever we need to do.
Yeah. So you get a couple options. Come into compliance, and then it's just a building permit, put the sign up. Or if you really have a, you know, a real desire for exceeding it, then it would come to us. Yeah, well, when you come into the planning office, so, you know, we'll pull up the, the code and, right?
Yeah, we need the linear frontage of the space to figure out the, which the sign guy might actually have.
But he's not.
But he's not here.
That's all right. We'll get it, we'll get it.
So we just don't have all the information tonight. We, you know, we'd like, love to help you, you know that, so.
The other gables there have signage like Edward Jones and some others, so you can get a good feel for.
He's actually taking.
It is the Edward Jones.
Fits exactly where the other sign was, as a matter of fact. You could see the.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, one, I think one of the problems is the Empire State Building, the parts.
Most of it fits, the spire that goes above it.
And that's only two inches wide at the very, at the very, it's only two inches wide, because I did ask the sign guy tonight, prior to coming here, that at the base of the building, at the top of the building, that where the spire starts, it's only two inches wide.
Oh, that's, is it, but is this?
It goes to nothing.
Is the spire in the building actually backlit, so the building glows?
It does, yes.
Yeah. So, because it, if, if the Empire State Building wasn't there, it would be a 24-square-foot sign, though, which actually would still need a waiver. I'm, I'm thinking that the Edward Jones is probably calculated as a box around the words, not a box around the, yeah, the sort of background little wood thing on there. But your sign fills up the whole space, which is why it actually is still bigger than the Edward Jones sign. Yeah, Mo's got it up. Yeah, Mo's got it up.
I'm literally right because the spire goes up above the line.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's only, I believe, foot?
Well, the spire looks, according to this, the spire looks like it almost touches the green, the green line.
Yeah, so the spire sticks up six inches above the rest of the sign, right?
Yeah.
No, more than that. Because the sign itself is 24 inches and the spire is 32 inches tall, so it's sticking up eight inches. But you're saying the width of the spire is only two inches.
The width of the spire is only two inches.
And it's sticking up like eight inches over the sign. But this can definitely come back to the planning board. We definitely have the ability to waive signage.
Did Edward Jones get a waiver?
No, but you know, I don't think that the, sorry, if Mo doesn't mind passing around his phone. The square footage of the Edward Jones sign is calculated on the font of the Edward Jones. Like it's the box that you draw around the word Edward Jones. It's not calculated on the edge of that wood paneling.
It's based on the letters.
It's based on the letters. Whereas this one is actually taking up the whole sign of the wood paneling. It's the size of the wood paneling.
But are we, are we saying that six inches, that the spire protrudes above the words Empire State is multiplying across the.
Yes, it does, yeah, because it's the minimum. Yes, so it's the minimum. Yes, it's the minimum square you can draw around.
Exactly.
So it's a lot of empty space, which, I mean, we have.
That's what I was, that's what I was kind of like hoping that you would kind of sway the other way because there is nothing on the.
Right.
Right, so bottom line is we'll have a follow-up, right? And we'll do the follow-up and we'll get the exact language that's in the code, whether we can waive it, what it is. And if we decide, obviously you want to come in as compliance the best you can.
Absolutely.
And that'll make it easier for us to get on board to waive it, okay? All right?
But we're set with the rest of it.
We're all set with the rest of it. We got to vote.
We got to vote the resolution.
As soon as we vote, we got, we're trying to help you out there, but we didn't have all the data. If we had it at the time, we could have had all the.
And I'm confidential, make the sign be something that's compliant.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and you can work with the planning office. But let's, anything else on the resolution for the change of tenant, site plan approval? I think we're all good. You know, we all know that's, like you said, it's a similar business moving in. So it's great to fill empty space. So we're glad to have you there.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all before we vote? Okay, please call a roll.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Leflamme?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye, resolution is approved. Thank you and look forward to having you and good luck with the business. And come on in the office and we'll straighten out the sign thing, okay?
Good, thank you, we'll do, thank you.
All right, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have a lot of project managers on this board.
That's good, that's what we're supposed to.
Yeah, well, you know, we tried to help out. It was last-minute stuff. We did the best we could, you know.
Yeah, so he had originally promised to send us the, not these guys, AJ or whoever's doing the sign, had promised to send us multiple iterations of the sign for a planning board to consider on Friday, but he had a family emergency. So then we checked this morning and he still hadn't sent us the signed stuff, so. So I mean, I'm not that surprised that it came here, but yeah, we didn't have time to fully calculate anything.
Right, so he's not AJ, right? He is Fathead?
Oh, Fathead, that's right, yeah. I think this Mike Remillard, maybe, I'm pretty sure his name is Mike Rem, so Clark, our Assistant Town Planner, has been coordinating with the, with Mike Remillard. And he was, he had meant to have the signage in earlier so that it'll all be included in the packet. But if he didn't have it to us on Friday, we couldn't put it into the resolution, so.
Correct.
We have a color limit also on the sign.
Yeah, I was just counting though, they only have three.
They have three, it looks like it's only three. So the black would be better green, maybe, if.
But we need to do the formal review and get the actual data. I know it'll be okay, right?
I think though, because if, yes. But if you look at the adjacent signs, they were done in the old style. So we probably want to look at like, for instance, Tai Tai Bisho and stuff. This is still bigger.
Yep.
Yeah, so we might still want to shrink it down a little bit.
Yep. All right. Okay, we'll move on to the discussion item. We have 416 Balltown Road, application for site plan approval, review of Chase Bank in Mohawk Commons. And I know that Mr. Big Park, we have Project Lee for this one, he's with us tonight, yay. And I guess I'll just turn it over to you.
Yeah, I think we should also, it should be reflected that it's really, I'm co-leading it with Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Oh, sorry.
I forgot, I knew I was supposed to.
But yeah, just, I guess the big update on this project is that for all of the variances that the applicant was seeking from the zoning board, those variances were granted. So that was, that was for parking, which was more of a site-wide issue based on the calculation set out in the code for the district as a whole. And then two sign variances, the temporary construction sign and.
So those were our waivers.
Oh, did we?
The zoning board took action on was the setback to the Target lot line.
Yep, yeah, so they're both kind of site-wide.
The monument sign was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn.
Yep.
So next steps, we have yet to get, receive comment from TDE. Who are we using, Laura?
Uh, Weston and Sampson.
Okay. We did receive comments from the Tree Council. There's, I think, maybe an invasive species that they like to see removed and. Aside from that, I think they're pretty happy. You'll recall, there's a net increase in the, in the green space on this plan. And it's one of the, one of the positives is they're, I think they said they're reducing the impervious coverage by about 15%. So something to, something to like about this. I was also, I was thinking it might be worthwhile to, we did receive in the first meeting on this project, we received a separate signage package from Philadelphia Sign Company. So they're, the applicant based their, their sign waiver application on that. However, some of those signs aren't incorporated into the architect's elevations.
Yeah, we talked about that.
So I think it would probably be cleaner to have it all on one plan. So that, that's one kind of minor item that, that we have to iron out. I did, I did watch the zoning board meeting. There were no major other, other issues raised. The, one of the zoning board members asked about the entrance being created to the west property boundary, being that it's kind of a busy road. They just expressed a concern about that, which we've kind of already gone over with the applicant. The, the possibility of creating a third access point to the site was raised, but I think there were some pros and cons on both side of that, of that, that proposal. So, you know, I don't, it seems based on, based on what the project engineer stated, that the expected circulation kind of fits with just two access points. So I was content with that.
Was there any public comment at all during the ZVA meeting?
No, no, the, I mean, the notices probably only went out to the.
No, there was a fair amount of people because it goes from property line. Because it notifies everybody across the street, even though, even though they can't, well, they can see it, but they're not that close to it and it's down the hill, but it goes from their property line. And I think it hits everybody on Taurus Road too because of Lowe's. People on Balltown. Yeah.
Okay.
So the residential homes on the east, west, west side of Balltown and then the adjacent properties on Taurus Road, they all get notified.
Right.
That's like when GE does something, we have to do it by the parcel line and we send out like 100 letters.
And we're required also to notify non, people outside of the municipality?
I, yeah, we don't know, but we always do.
Yeah, right, because there's.
Yeah, we always email to anybody who's adjacent.
I know there were online comments when Gazette did an article about it, about like, oh, why are we getting another restaurant?
I got those comments.
And you like have to understand, like, we're not, like, we don't come up with these ideas.
No.
Right, it's, it's almost like we sometimes need a planning board 101 education for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did get, I got emails that says we don't need another bank, we need another restaurant. But I mean, Ruby, I mean, it didn't do well there. I mean.
Well, regardless of what.
They didn't do well anywhere. They closed the Latham and they closed other ones too.
Yeah, it's not for us to come up with an idea.
Or you can count Chase, they can just do a buffet every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Donuts for customers? There we go.
Is that allowed in the?
I think it said Be Good never came back. And I've seen other ones around. Did you guys notice that? Do you remember Be Good was going to go adjacent to the Spectrum store?
That's right, yeah.
And it never came back.
Never came back.
And there's multiple ones that are open around now.
Who was that, Laura, again?
They were called Be Good.
Oh.
Oh, right.
Because we were looking at outdoor seating over and how they were going to park over by Panera and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we had a couple of resolutions tonight were reuse of, you know, empty properties, so it's all good, you know?
I mean, since we're talking, I'm surprised that Panera didn't jump on that property so they could get their drive-through.
I thought that as well. I mean, I actually even mentioned it to the developing company multiple times.
Yeah.
I don't know, it was just too expensive for them to move or something, but yeah. I mean, if they did a freestanding store, they have freestanding stores like that.
I mean, they're one of the few Paneras that are still old-style. Most of the other ones have been upgraded to a new look.
It's true. Although I think they upgraded their sign.
Okay, so on 416 Balltown Road, in general, we're in pretty good shape, just basically waiting on TDE comments.
Yeah, and then if you guys had anything, because we would theoretically be bringing it back for final in November, just because, I mean, it's kind of nice for us, but we only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So, so it would be a tentative final in November. So if there was something that was really bugging you, we would tell them now so they could work on it.
No, I didn't have anything, I mean.
And I tried to glean what I could from the minutes, but since we're here live, we can ask. During, so there will be some heavy-duty construction going on there, right? So the impact of the rest of Mohawk Commons is?
They gave us a demolition timeframe of 165 days from utility cutoff.
I think that's actually complete.
That's completion.
That's completion of the project. The demolition was like.
Demo was two weeks.
Yeah.
Yep. And they're going to construct a, they're going to have a construction fence. I think they said they would put the slats in the fence if requested.
Okay.
If a condition was made, so.
Which, was it Target that we required to do slats in the fence for something when they were restoring?
Well, when they were doing a storage, I think.
Yeah.
Their temporary storage as they were remodeling the inside.
Demo, two to three weeks from demo to clean site.
And then 165 total turnaround.
65 days after utility cuts, demo to build a new one.
Yeah, I remember reading it. I just wanted to at least bring it up in the discussion. I mean, it might be good for the property in that, you know, people see that there's actual new building investment going in.
No, it's great.
She's going to be nice.
All right, so it sounds like we have no major comments. We're just waiting to see if Weston and Sampson come up with anything, right?
And that's just a cursory check because they're, by demolishing the building, they're changing the utilities, so.
Did we, do you think a comment from the fire department might be, be useful in determining whether or not two access points is sufficient?
I mean, I coordinate everything with them anyway, although this is Stanford Heights, which is a volunteer fire department. So it's sometimes a little bit harder to get comments back from the volunteers, but we could try, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Mr. McPartland or Mrs. Scrubby Tennis on that at all? No, okay, great. All right, we'll keep moving in on reports. Ms. Robertson, you have anything?
Chairman Walsh and Chris Leflamme are going to the training on Wednesday. I know if, oh.
I was planning on it.
Oh, you were? I will sign you up.
Yeah, is it too late?
No.
Okay. I just, it just occurred to me that I, I scheduled it and forgot to tell you.
Okay, that's totally great, because I know, I actually think that as a board, you guys are doing pretty good, you might be.
I didn't sign up, is there a day of registration?
We're in Saratoga, it's got to be good.
Oh, you did, did you go to Saratoga? Okay, so you're probably good.
January, right?
January, okay, um, so I will double check, I actually think the planning board is doing pretty good this year, especially if you guys are going, and I'll register you tonight, I'm just going to randomly pick classes, you can go to whatever classes you want.
Oh, okay.
They don't mind.
Send you an email or?
If you, I mean, if you have it, you can forward it to me, tonight, tonight's the last day, I just do it from my phone because I have the, the card, we're just squeaking you in.
Can I, can I do it personally or?
No, because I pay for it with my procurement card, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks, Laura.
Yeah, no problem.
One thing, if you know, if you watched the zoning board of appeals, uh, meeting with respect to the Chase Bank application, we spent a lot of time on the parking requirement, like just grasping the idea that no matter what, they couldn't satisfy, what was it, 200, whatever the waiver was, that would be impossible to do. So, Laura, do you anticipate other property owners changing in Mohawk Commons, or are there other areas where you have the same issue, where there's multiple bad, I'm calling them bad actors, but no one who's really responsible, because we could do some sort of resolution that would basically say in those circumstances that as long as the applicant has the number required, so like for banks, what was it, 17 or something, they, they wouldn't need a variance, but we couldn't do it on a case-by-case because then it would be spot zoning.
Well, so there's three parcels in Mohawk Commons, there's the one, one is owned by Target, um, one is the one that we're looking at, which starts at Lowe's and wraps around all the way to Price Shopper Marshals, and then the last one, same owner, is Barnes and Noble's parcel, and that's basically just that single building. So the variance, even though Chase Bank pursued it, was for the entire parcel from Lowe's all the way to Price Shopper Marshals, so if anything happened in that very large parcel, they'll, they'd be covered now, so they could change the parking spaces around, um.
So anybody, so if someone like moved into a different, a different tenant came in, took over, they don't have to come in, even if they're changing, I think they do, if they're changing the number of parking spaces, because.
If they're making it less, if they're recontigerating them, they are okay.
I mean, in so much as you think it's going to come up again, and then people, and everyone's in agreement.
But it wouldn't be, so, um, it wouldn't, so the issue with that parcel is that it was essentially a pre-existing non-conformity, although it wasn't from like 1970, it was from like 2002, but it doesn't have that anymore because it had a variance, so if somebody was going to come in and change the parking spots by like four parking spots, yeah, it might still need a variance, but you're not looking at a 294 parking space variance anymore, you're actually looking apples to apples, like what's happening now.
In other words, you cleaned it up.
So the playing field on that one is set.
You cleaned it up and brought it up to date.
And I think if they're removing five parking spaces from that parking lot, they legitimately need to go and say, I'm removing five parking spaces from that parking lot, but the other two parcels may have that same pre-existing non-conformity that Lowe's and Marshals has, I guess we, my suggestion would be we just deal with them if something comes along, they're a little bit more, they have much less buildings, so it's just sort of, you know, based on one building, so that wouldn't be as difficult as this parking calculation was, it was really, well, you guys saw the charts, it was really, really different. I would say the majority of the problem, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's an excess of parking, I mean, we're, I mean, this is kind of a hypothetical issue, right?
Oh, no, well, it's an ocean of parking, but per code, we're missing like 500 parking spaces.
Yeah.
There's a defect, right, there's a defect in our calculations, I mean, because I've never seen it at even maximum capacity.
Um, so I was looking, and this is what I was trying to explain to the zoning board, when Mohawk Commons was created out of Mohawk Mall, the site plan was, it's kind of like when you guys see subdivisions and it's just postage stamp houses, they were postage stamp businesses, but they weren't necessarily built, and so they granted a variance for the entire thing, it was supposed to have like 2,500 parking spaces and they let them build like 2,000, but then they subdivided out and now all the buildings were built the same way that they were built on the postage stamp, like concept plan, but nobody was like, oh, you're not following the concept plan, you've reduced the parking even more, and then the lot lines changed stuff, so you wound up with a, just a totally, the numbers just didn't work. But I completely agree with you, even though the numbers didn't work, there's more than enough parking for everyone, like.
Yeah, and that's why it's important for a case-by-case, depends on where you go, and this is a perfect case where, you know, that was Ruby Tuesday, it's been empty, nobody's parking there anyway, so there's really no impact, right?
Well, and.
You got to look at, you know, whatever changes we have in the future, you know, if it's over near Lowe's, there's lots of empty parking.
So, yeah, so Lowe's is like 300 spaces underparked, but you can park at Christmas time, at Christmas time at Lowe's, like, it's still only like a third full, I mean, that is just an enormous parking lot. Price Shopper maybe, Price Shopper's underparked and that parking lot can get pretty full.
Yeah, like it's.
But I think it's okay.
Did you have anything else, Laura?
No.
How about Ms. Kim, do you have anything else?
No.
On the reports, we have any questions for Laura or, or Ms. Kim?
Laura, can I just ask a favor, I didn't think it was relevant tonight to ask the two applicants, I don't know, because I think it might be a little coercive, but from time to time, when an applicant comes in, would you ask them a little bit, get a little color texture about the real estate market, available leasehold, price per square foot, just relevant data to feed us on a relevant basis, I think to inquire, that's when they're making applications.
Oh, you could have asked John McCaffrey that, he is like the commercial Realtor in this unit.
Yeah, I just didn't want to, again, I didn't want that to be considered a subject of condition, but again, since it's a casual meeting when they meet, I'd love to get some more color and context about what's happening, why, why in this unit, what's available space, what's the land, again.
What the concerns are, right?
Based on what Mr. Oster just said, right, we often, people hear from people saying, I'd like to have, you know, I want to have a Trader Joe's in town, well, there's, there's reason why there's, there's, why we have markets in town, what works, what doesn't work, I think it'd be helpful, just get some details.
Yeah, do you hear that about the old Walmart building all the time? People tell that to me all the time.
We'd like to have a lot of things in town.
Do we know why Edward Jones left that spot?
No.
Didn't they go, didn't they move over to, uh?
The McPartland building.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's what it was, I knew there was, that's right. Not you, the other.
No, no, it was your.
Not the other, not the other part, in the other.
Yeah, they went over, what we did, we approved the sign, approved the sign.
But you know what's funny, I didn't connect that when we were approving the sign, it didn't, I didn't connect that they were the same shop, right, Edward Jones.
Yeah, 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 it, it, okay, that makes sense, that's, well, obviously that place has something to do with asset fund management, so let's see.
I do, let's see, one question I have, Laura, for the Knott Street project, the county project, I know that you were going to reduce, I guess, all the comments that were received, did you complete that?
I did, I sent it to the town board, but I didn't include you guys, I will forward you the email.
I think it's, I think we should at least have it for information.
Laura, anything on Rivers, Rivers Life?
Oh, they're scheduling a pre-construction meeting, hopefully next week.
Will you be part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, if you let me.
Yeah, I will forward, I haven't, time, I haven't scheduled the date yet, so I'll send you the times that we're looking at.
One, one last question I have is the, the hardware store, I know they, they put on pause, that they actually withdraw their application, are they done or is it still hanging out there?
They're still working on it, actually John McCaffrey's helping them.
Did you, um, return the money to them?
Not yet.
I don't think you need to, because we already had the public hearing, or we already called for it, you know, but going forward, did you explain why we didn't make the body massage, or what was it called, bodywork professionals do a special use?
No, I, um, I don't know if you guys noticed, but when Lou Leacy went into a CN zone, he was going from a medical professional to a professional office, and he didn't need a special use permit, but then when Ace Hardware came, they were going from professional office to retail, and Paul Briggs felt like that triggered a special use permit, but I was arguing with him very respectfully, because I don't think that there's any difference in the code between changing, if they're all outlined as they are, going between medical office and professional office and professional office and retail, they're all different uses, so you either have to decide that they all get a special use permit, or that if they're not changing the building by more than 25%, that it's permitted outright use, like, you can't say, mm, that one's okay to me, but this one seems like it's more intense, so I, I told him and Alexis to make a call, and then we decided that the way the code reads, it doesn't need a special use permit, so if Ace Hardware comes back, they don't need a special use permit.
Okay.
Which means that we wouldn't have needed to call for a public hearing.
You would need to call for a public hearing for the site plan, I mean, I think it would be the choice of this board to call for a public hearing for the site plan.
Yeah, and I think we would, you know, that would be my guess, right, because it's, because we try to be, you know, transparent and make sure we do that, and I think, you know, the real, real situation is when you have a change of use is, you know, if there a difference in the type of parking, you know, and, you know, and the use itself, and that's something that we handle, right?
That's something that you guys.
Yeah, we handle it, so I, I'm, you know, I'm okay with that, you know. Okay, that's my question, I had nothing else for Laura or Ms.